At this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing on the 2022-23 school budget screen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will go through some highlights of the budget and then if there are any parents or taxpayers here that have any questions about the budget, we'll try and answer them. So the 2022-23 budget is just under $90.3 million. That's a 7.7% increase over last year, or about $6.4 million. Our tax, our total tax levy is going up 2.5%, which is below the tax cap set by New York State. Every district has to do their own calculation to come up with their tax cap, even though they call it the 2% tax cap. Ours was 3.18% this year, but we are limiting our tax increase to 2.5%. We are receiving a $3.5 million increase in our foundation aid this year, which is a whopping 10.8% increase over last year. We're in the year two of a three-year phase-in of full funding of our foundation aid formula. So next year, we will be fully phased in and receiving our our full share of the foundation aid formula as it stands now. This budget includes an increase of 12 positions. We are adding three assistant principals at the elementary schools. So now each of our buildings has an assistant principal. We are adding two special ed coordinators to take on, take over the role that the CSE chairperson used to do. So now we'll have two positions in the district to fill that role. We're adding a special ed teacher at Herman Elementary, and we're adding one teaching assistant to each of the other four elementary schools. We're also using $2.5 million of our fund balance this year. That will reduce our fund balance. We, we have been over the limit allowed by New York State, so we are working our fund balance down, and we're using that portion of that to balance next year's budget. We will have new alternative education programs at the high school and for students who are struggling in the typical learning environment. And we hope this will help our graduation rate and help students that are not seeing the outcome that everyone would hope for. And we're also doing an alternative ed program at the elementary level. It will be for all elementary students that are eligible, but it will be housed at Casey Park Elementary. There will be two classrooms. So we'll have two teachers and two teaching assistants, and then we'll have some mental health supports from Cuba Counseling. Is that correct? So the total expenditures in the budget, these are the different categories that we break it down by. Obviously, salaries and then benefits are our two biggest pieces of our budget. Salaries are going up 7.1% this year due to the new positions we're adding, as well as all of the contractual increases in the bargaining unit contracts. Benefits up 5.7%, that's pretty modest increase. We've seen much bigger increases. Our teachers' retirement system contribution rate is going up, and our health insurance costs are going up. Our debt service, you'll see a big percentage increase, about $1 million this year. That's because we're seeing some principal and interest payments kicking in on the new capital project that we've been working on. We're starting to have to repay the debt on that. Our equipment is fairly stable. This is mainly some operating equipment for our facilities department, as well as instructional hardware devices for our students. Contractual items are a myriad of, basically a catch-all for everything that doesn't fit into any of these other categories. But the biggest piece of that is probably our transportation. We spend about $2.5 million per year transporting students. BOSI's is up significantly this year, about 1.2, 1.3 million, a 9% increase. And that is large for BOSI's. This includes mainly the increases due to our special ed programming, as well as a lot of technology, software, hardware, infrastructure that we purchase through BOSI's. Constantly, we're always spending more on those types of items. Supplies are fairly flat, actually a little bit of a decrease. This is for all of our maintenance in our buildings, maintenance and cleaning supplies. Also includes all of our classroom supplies for all of the teachers, the kids in the classroom. And then interfund transfers is the same as last year. This includes a $100,000 capital project that we include in our budget every year. If we keep it to 100,000 or less, then we receive our building aid back, all of it, in the following year, where a normal capital project is spread out, our building aid is spread out over 15 years. So we, these are typically energy performance type of contracts, projects. They'll save us energy. This year, actually, we're including a new marquee here at the high school, and we'll also be including some automatic touchless, what do I call them, drinking fountains? I couldn't read my own writing, sorry about that. So that's the 7.7% increase in our total expenditures, again, $6.4 million. The state requires every school district to break down their budget between three main components. So the biggest component is the program, which basically is all of our instructional and support programs for the students. And that's typically about 3/4, close to 75% of our budget. Then the other 25% is made up of capital items, such as all of our facilities maintenance, as well as our principal and interest payments on debt service. Those are counted as capital items. And then administration is everything else that's not capital or programming. So these percentages are pretty consistent from year to year, and there's not much variation this year either. Our state aid, the first item, our foundation aid, is our biggest piece of aid. It's, it's pretty much unrestricted. This is the aid, general aid that we can use how the district sees fit. We're not restricted in this category. So this is where we're seeing the big $3.5 million increase. Our building aid, as I mentioned, our debt service is going up. Our building aid is also going up about $1 million. So that accounts for the state helping to pay for our capital projects. We get about 86% of our capital projects' costs reimbursed through state aid, through building aid. Transportation aid, this is actually, even though our transportation costs are going up, and they're going up significantly next year, the state determined that some of the costs that we incurred during COVID for transportation are not going to be eligible for reimbursement through transportation aid. So we are expecting a small decrease next year. BOSI's aid, again, as I said, our BOSI's costs are going up, so our BOSI's aid is going up. It's, it's a reimbursement, it's a formula. Whatever we spend at BOSI's, we get a percentage of that back in BOSI's aid. Excess cost aid, this, this varies a little bit from year to year, or it could be a significant variance, actually. It has to do with all of the programming for our special ed students. So the state, we have high-cost students, and they're basically mainly the students that have a one-to-one aid that accompanies them throughout the day. Those are the students that generally qualify as high-cost. So the state requires that we meet a certain cost threshold, which is about almost $40,000 for next year. So the first $40,000, we're responsible for per student. And after that, the state reimburses a portion, about 2/3 of anything above that $40,000 for those students. In the other category is some bullet aid that we've been fortunate enough to receive from Senator Mannion, and we'll be receiving that again next year. And also includes money that we get reimbursed from the state for our homeless students. And we, we track the costs for those students, transportation, special programming, and we get a reimbursement of a portion of those costs. The last category is our transportation or textbook, library, and software, sorry, TLS. We, each district receives a fixed amount per student. So all of these costs reimbursements are based on our enrollment numbers. So in total, our state aid in total is going up $4.7 million next year.
Lisa, and I just wanted to comment on the foundation aid piece and the frustration that we have, because it does seem like we're getting a big chunk of foundation aid. We're getting 10.8%, right? So we're getting $3.2 million. But if you noticed on there, what we're supposed to be receiving is approximately what, Lisa? 30, 40 million dollars, right?
Yes.
So, so the frustrating piece about the foundation aid is that even though we got a 10.8% increase, every school district in New York State got at least a 3% increase. We're trying to get to what we're supposed to be getting, while other school districts are already at or past what they're supposed to get in foundation aid, and they still got another 3% on top of it. So as Auburn is trying to fight for the money that we're supposed to be deserved and supposed to be receiving, other school districts are still getting the 3% increase, even if they're receiving what they're supposed to, or millions of dollars above what they're supposed to. And that's pretty frustrating. You know, we, we've been fighting for a fair formula and to be fully funded. It's going to be great to be fully funded, hopefully next year. And again, that's what they're telling us. We don't know if that's going to happen. But these other school districts still continue to build a bigger gap between us and them, because they continue to get overfunded. So you know, that's one of the pieces that really is frustrating. And when you look, we've been underfunded for how many years now, Lisa? Is it about 10?
More than 10.
12 years?
Since 2007?
Oh, wow, yeah, I wasn't even going to go back that far.
15 years.
Yeah, yeah, so we've been, you can't fix that in one year. You just can't. So you know, we're finally hitting the $90 million mark, while there are school districts that are just south of us that might have about 1,000 students more, whose budget's around between 130 and 140,000 dollars.
Million.
Or a million dollars, anything. Yeah, 130 to 140 million dollars. So you know, we're, we still have a long ways to go. But that is the frustrating part, is because even some of my counterparts will be like, "Oh, what are you complaining about? You got a 10.8% increase." Well, you guys are getting millions of dollars over what you're supposed to be getting in foundation aid. We're still $4 million below that mark.
And they have been getting it for years.
For years, for years.
So, I mean, fully funded is an arbitrary number, right?
It is.
When the ceiling keeps getting raised on how much the other district is giving.
Correct.
Fully funded is not what it used to be, you know, in 2007.
That's right.
We'll take questions right after the end.
We're going to have questions also. You guys will be able to ask whatever you want.
Okay. So that's the state aid. Now, our total revenues, the first two lines, the operating aids and the building aid, that, that's what we just covered on the previous slide. The other revenues includes various items, the biggest item of which is a BOSI's refund that we receive every year. We're budgeted $1 million for a BOSI's refund. What happens is we pay BOSI's, we have a contract with BOSI's. We pay them based on that contract. And then at the end of the year, BOSI's is not allowed to end the year with a surplus. So any profit, so to speak, that BOSI's makes has to be returned to the districts. So every year, you know, they, they budget conservatively. They charge us more than typically what's absolutely needed. And then we get a refund back the following year. So there's always a lag in that. So we always budget for it. It also includes money that we get through pilot agreements, payment in lieu of taxes, that businesses have with the county and the city. Instead of paying property taxes, they have these agreements. And we have about $650,000 budgeted in our budget for those payments that we'll receive next year. Those are the two biggest items. We also get Medicare D subsidy from the federal government, because we have retirees on our health plan that otherwise would be eligible for Medicare prescription coverage. But because they're on our plan, the government reimburses us a portion of those costs. And that's about $300,000 a year. The tax levy, you can see that it's 34.2 million, the 2.5% increase that we talked about. Interfund transfers, this is money that comes out of the capital project into the general fund to help us pay some of our interest costs on short-term borrowing. So it's a significant decrease in next year's budget from what we were able to realize this year. And then again, our use of, well, reserves or fund balance. In this case, it's, it's fund balance that we're using, 2.5 million. Again, the tax levy, 2.5% increase. It generates about $835,000 in additional revenue for us. The tax levy, 34, just under 34.3 million. You can see the tax levy for each of the past five years, including this year, this upcoming year. Those five numbers equal an average of 2.17% increase per year. Now, this is the hard part, and especially this year, estimating what's going to happen with individual property owners' taxes. So in a, in a typical year, the state requires us to explain or demonstrate how, what would happen to a $100,000 home. If your home is assessed at $100,000, what you paid in taxes this year compared to what you would pay next year. So because the city did a revaluation of all its properties in the city limits, this makes this a little trickier this year, because the tax levy, the total amount the district is taxing, is up 2.5%. But because the city increased assessed values, the total property assessment in the city is up, that makes the tax rate go down. And it, and I don't have, we don't have final numbers yet. We won't have final numbers until August. That's when the board will approve the actual tax rate. So we're estimating it based on all the numbers that we have at this time. So if you had a $100,000 home last year, or in this current last year, last September's tax bill would have been $1,896. And that's not accounting for any star exemptions or any other exemptions that you may have had. Just a regular home assessed at 100,000 would have been $1,896. Next year, if your assessment, for some reason, stayed the same, if it didn't go up, like most properties in the city, I think, did, then your tax bill for this year would be $731, which would be a $165 decrease. So if your assessment didn't go up, you will see a decrease in your tax bill. Now, the other scenario that I'm presenting is if your, if your home's assessed value was increased by 10%, causing it to go from 100,000 to 110,000. Again, last year, you would have paid $1,896. This upcoming year, we're estimating the tax bill would be $1,904, which is an $8 increase. So you, you can't just look at your tax bill from last year and add 2.5% to it. It never works that way, because individual properties change their value or have different exemptions. The towns, we get equalization rates from New York State, and they're different every year for the towns and the city. All of that factors into the actual tax rate and what your actual tax bill will look like. So I'm trying to present some different scenarios for you. But again, we won't have final numbers until August. In the case of a contingency budget, so if this budget that we're presenting next week is voted down, then the board has the option to either put the same budget up for a second vote, or they can make changes to this budget and put that up for another vote. Or they could just decide to say, "We're going to go to a contingency budget." If we do put up another budget and it's defeated again, then we ought, then we have to go to a contingency budget. And in that case, we are not allowed to do any tax increase at all. So the 835,000 that's being generated by the tax levy increase would have to be cut from the budget. We would have to cut expenditures equal to that amount. In addition, there is an administrative cap, that administrative portion of the budget that was about 11%. That, in, in a contingency budget, after we make cuts, that percentage can't be any higher. We, so in other words, we can't just cut non-administrative costs. The cuts have to be across the board, through all the components. And then things that are not considered, they're non-contingent items, are any equipment purchases other than those that are for the students for instructional devices. So operating equipment for the facilities department has to be cut. That small capital project for $100,000 that we talked about has to be eliminated. And any salary increases for non-contractual employees would have to be eliminated. And these are basically our confidential secretaries would not be allowed to receive any raises. In addition, we would have to implement user fees for the, our, all of our facilities, for any community use of the, of our facilities. So on the ballot this year, our first proposition is the budget, the 90.2, 90.3 million. The second proposition is whether to allow a student, a student from the district, a senior, to serve as a member on the Board of Education, but without voting authority. They can't attend executive session, and they are not allowed to vote on resolutions. In addition, we have four open board seats. We have five candidates running for office. So the three highest vote-getters will each serve terms of three years. And then the fourth highest will fulfill an unfinished term, and that'll be one year. Who can vote? You don't have to be a registered voter to, to be able to vote on school board election. You have to be 18 years old or more, and you have to have lived in the district for at least 30 days prior to the date of the vote. Yes. So you can vote, and we have four sites. We'll list that on the next slide. You can vote at any of those slide, at any of those sites, or you can vote, vote by absentee ballot. You can, you have to fill out an application for an absentee ballot. You can get that on the website, or at the district office, or at any of the school buildings. Or call the district office, and we can mail you an application. But absentee ballots have to be received back in the district office by 5%, by 5:00 p.m. on the date of the vote. These are the polling places, the Junior High, and then Casey, Owosco, and Seward Elementary. The polls are open again Tuesday, May 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And now we can take any questions. Yes? No.
We can hear.
That are we using Dominion voting machines?
I have a question about this.
Yep. We have to do it every two years. So every two years, we have to put it back out to the community so that they can approve to have a student rep on our board.
Last year?
Was year one.
First year. So when was that voted on?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
No, we, so we had student reps years ago, before I was superintendent. And so the first time we did that, when I was superintendent, was three years ago. We had the conversation. So we've only had it for two years. And now we'll do a re-election again. But that hasn't happened. The last time was probably seven years ago, we had a student rep.
What would be the reasoning behind why we're so underfunded?
I'm sorry.
What would be the reasoning behind why we're so underfunded? Like, why did it start back in 2007?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Well, in 2007, the, there was a huge lawsuit that was settled. Some districts sued New York State, saying that children weren't receiving enough funds. Districts weren't receiving enough funds to appropriately educate the students. The lawsuit was settled, and in the district's favor. And so the state was mandated to come up with a formula to allocate foundation aid. So that formula was, was created. We think there's lots of flaws in the formula. We need the formula to be fixed. But at that time, all districts began to receive their funding based on that formula. Some districts already at that time were already getting more money than what that formula allowed for. So being a, you know, because prior to that formula being put in place, state aid, it wasn't called foundation aid. There were just lots of different aid categories, and it was all, I won't say all, but it was political.
There's a lot of political pieces.
Yeah.
It was all political.
Absolutely.
Shocked.
Yeah, absolutely.
So was there something about Auburn that put us, as you were stating, lower than the other counties?
Well, one thing for a small-city school district, they use data back from 2000. Back in 2000, Auburn was an average-needs district.
They use the 2000 census data.
Yes.
And at that time, each, each district in New York State is categorized as low-needs, average-needs, or high-needs. And at that time, that that formula was done, Auburn was considered an average-needs district. Within, within a very short time after that, we became a high-needs district, as our poverty levels went up, as our test scores went down. We, we are now ranked categorized as a high-needs district. So in the formula, that, that allows us to qualify for more aid, but we're not getting it. So that, that is a big reason why we're underfunded.
So what is it that the community can do to assist in any way, shape, or form, in getting that funding, and making sure that the special education department is funded the way they need to be?
We've been doing it for 10 years.
Well, that's what our Fix and Fund It Committee that, that we formed, how many years ago?
Ms. Gould, I think you maybe bent one of the media, could be wrong. But it's really been, people have been fighting for it for, since 2007. We knew it was going to be a problem. Four years ago, we started an advocacy committee. So, you know, we were doing petitioning outside of different, all of our concerts. We've advocated in front of all of our legislators. We've gone, brought plus-loads of kids to Albany, and parents have joined us in every step of that process. So we are always looking for more.
We've met many times with representatives from Albany, trying to make our case why we're underfunded.
And Lisa's spoken to this. The problem is there are some districts that really benefit from this, right? There's some districts in our own county that are overfunded.
Overfunded, by millions of dollars.
And, and so there's a constituency that liked the formula as it is, and there's districts like ours that are, you know, almost 20%, spending 20% less per pupil. And we're trying to make our voice heard over all of the people that are happy with how it's working out for them.
And of course, legislators never want, they, once you are getting the money, it never goes down. No, no legislator is going to go to a school district that's in their, in their legislative district and say, "You're going to get less money this year, because you, you got too much last year, or you've been getting too much." That never happens. Those, they call that, so all these districts are hold harmless, meaning they never lose funding. So they get a 3% increase, even though they're already overfunded.
So is there any other counties in any vicinity here that's as low-funded as we are?
Across the state.
Yeah, the only dis, the only district anywhere near us that's as underfunded as we are is Utica. Right? Utica's spending, I think, 14,000 and something per student. So Utica's spending, I think, 14,000 something per student, and we're around 15,000. And the state average is what, Lisa?
23.
23.
Right? So we actually did a, we created a website, and Danielle, if I goof the website up, it's fixandfunded.org. And that's where we, that's where we've kind of done a deep dive on what are the problems with the funding formula? What needs to be fixed so that Auburn gets its fair share?
But, but to go, to go back, we are fully funded in relation to what the formula is today.
Next year.
Next year, we will be.
Yeah, we're still $4 million under that mark.
For how many years?
We've been under that mark since 2007.
We're not getting that money back.
Well, but, but typically, that would basically be $28 million or no.
Oh, it's more, it's, it's 100, it's over 100 million.
It's over $100 million.
15 years.
Yeah, we've lost over $100 million.
So, I mean, the city of Auburn taxpayers probably could have bought three years of paying city taxes.
Oh, my gosh, years without raising taxes.
Because we've been so underfunded.
So it's, it's a dual burden, right? It's, you can't pay more teachers, replace things.
We can't provide the services to the students.
We have to close West Middle, but also our taxpayers have to pay more.
They're paying.
I'm glad you brought that up, because yeah, it's over $100 million. Lisa has presented on the Guy Casantino show. And we've showed all those projections, what it looked like from one year to four years to seven years to 10 years. And yet it equates, it's equivalent to over $100 million.
I can send you that summary of that.
Yeah, we will send you, Lisa, in our Friday update, we can send you all the sheet.
The history that shows.
The history of how much we've lost.
Yeah, we should put that on the website.
Yeah, we can.
We can probably put it on Word docs in this part of the meeting, right?
Yeah, we could.
Any other questions? You can get the application on the website, or you can get it at the district office, or in any, any of the school buildings, they have them. Oh, yeah.